Ms. G, would you call the roll? Please.
Mr. Jean.
President.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Meigs.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Woodiska.
Here.
Mr. Rankin and Ms. Teetz are absent this evening.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The adoption, the agenda is adopted. Are there any planning commissioner reports? Lyndy?
Just a short one. I did have the pleasure of going to the joint city council school board hearing last week and got the first introduction into what will be involved in CIP. And it's gonna be a doozy this year, so tight your seat belts, friends. It's gonna be a lot of very interesting, very complex, extremely so. You know, so Cindy's gonna have to perform some miracles, and she assured me that she was going to. I said, "How are we gonna do this?"
Well, she's done it before. Any other reports, Russ?
I attended the city council meeting on last Monday with the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation where they gave a modified presentation to the city council about some ideas for the W and OD trail. I thought it, I've seen the presentation numerous times, but I thought it was very well-received by the council, and there's, filled with some terrific ideas there that require very little money and action on the part of council. So I'm hopeful that that can continue to move forward and some of those things can be implemented. It's a pleasure to be on that committee and be a part of a presentation like that. And at the same meeting, I also watched our new chair give the annual report, and she did a marvelous job.
Fortunately, I didn't have to write it. I did not have to write it. That was, I'm sure Ms. G did that. Yes, I was also there and saw the transportation presentation, and it was a good one. One of the questions asked was, "What do you expect us to do with this?" The city council said, "You know, this is a great presentation. What shall we do about it?" And so it'll be interesting to see, actually, if anything is done. Any other reports? Okay, we'll move on to receipt of petitions. Anyone in the audience who has something to say or a petition to the commission of things not on the agenda? I see none. Ms. G, do we have anything in writing?
Chair, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the planning director's report.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Eden Center project, it looks like it will be coming forward to you on the 4th. We've been making some progress with that project, the design of it with Fire Marshal and with the applicant, so we believe that'll be on track for the 4th. On the 11th, as you heard downstairs in the work session, it looks like city council will be doing a first reading on the Reserve at Tenner Hill project, so that will then be coming forward. We'll be working on a schedule for you with them, with that project. On the 19th, we anticipate there will be a work session prior to the planning commission meeting with city council and the commission, and we just found out about this today, looking to bring split lots and the coverage issue forward, work session, to see whether that can go forward to first reading. As you know, we've had discussion on that. Commission had a listening session, and we want to bring that forward so it can move into public hearing stage, so.
Did you say that was the 19th?
The 19th, it would be in advance of the city council meeting, a work session to hopefully give clearance to launch that with a first reading. We also are looking, anticipating an early March listening session to talk about Greenway Downs, which is on your, on the tentative schedule, and we've reserved a room, the 20th of April, to have a committee meeting to unveil a draft plan for South Washington Street, so that we can keep that moving. Then looking in early June, a kickoff meeting to look at the city center opportunity area. So that would give us, over the summer, a chance to begin working on that. So we're trying to keep on our work plan in terms of these small area plans. We have a lot that's been done and drafted, so just wanted to give you those high points in terms of what may be coming forward to you in the next few months. We also are, we have had a lot of permit activity, and we, in terms of our revenues coming through our counter, it's been very busy, and we're above our projected numbers there, so.
Do you guys have a quota?
No, no, but it does, I mean, we are seeing retail space filled. There's a series of restaurants that have been, been working real hard to fill vacant spaces. The building had the fire, is filling up, as you all have no doubt seen. That's a good sign. It certainly bodes well for new projects, if they have good street frontage, that once built, they will, you know, attract, attract good tenants. So, and we're feeling optimistic about the business community wanting to be here in Falls Church, and when space is built, it is now getting filled. I think there was an article about the Spectrum selling its last residential condominium unit, so with the new businesses that are opening up, these places will become more active, and that's all good, so.
I just have one question about the schedule. How does this kind of expedited schedule on the small area plans impact our comp plan agenda and schedule?
Well, we're trying to do the small area plans in like six months, no more than a year timeframe. Those are key pieces of the land use and economic development aspect of the comp plan. We are gonna be trying to come forward with you, and Ms. G and Elizabeth Perry and I have talked about this, bringing forward the introductory chapter to the, to the commission to look at and get your feedback. It has kind of the overview of the city and the comp plan, so we want to try to bring a chapter to you each month as we move forward. And so, again, updating the plan, getting your comments and taking those and trying to integrate them into updates to those individual chapters. As we're working on these small area plans, as you know, there were seven of these opportunity areas. We've done one, we're working on a second, we will do a third, we will have done South Washington Street, and we did develop a schedule to try to keep doing those over the next several years, so by the end of the cycle, we would have done, hopefully, all of those opportunity areas and have small area plans for them. So I think it is, it does give us a major step forward in terms of answering the question of what's going to happen in these important areas of the city, and the commission's activity of taking a close, hard look at these is very important for, for creating that vision and guiding those areas forward. So I think it's, I think it's very intertwined, if you will, with our update of the comp plan, because we're dealing with substance, we're dealing with particular areas and giving good guidance for those development areas.
Well, I know that's a lot of heavy workload for the staff, so I was just wondering, when we're moving so quickly to meet our deadlines on the small area plans.
No, we would hope in the comp plan that you would be able to have a short description of the plan and then be able to go to a link on the computer and pull up the document, for example, so that you would have access, as these, as we all know, these things are becoming more and more, you know, online, you'd be able to go from the plan, which would talk about these areas and have a brief description, and then go to the details of that plan. So in that sense, as these plans get developed, they can become accessible through the comp plan as we go to a more of an online type of document, where you go in and you can print out pieces as you need them, but you can link to important plan work that has been done, whether it's the pedestrian plan or, you know, like the W and OD bike presentation. Those kinds of things can be referenced, I think, in the comp plan that made available to people to go into more detail, so they really understand what's happening in that particular area. So we can go from the general guidance to more specific guidance in a particular area or topic.
That sounds good. Okay, then we will, thank you, Jim. We'll move on to old business. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't allow questions. I'm just joking. Any questions for the planning commissioners?
I always have questions, Ruth.
I know, I'm just joking.
Just automatically call on me. Well, Ross is in on this one, too.
No, no, I think we should have questions.
Our favorite subject is the traffic light at Penn and Broad. Out of curiosity, is that gonna have a left-hand turn light?
We've asked Mr. Hicks and Ms. Blox Anford to report on that when the transportation part comes to you on the CIP.
Because that, you know.
I'm dodging the question, because I don't know the answer.
There was a, there was a letter to the editor about left-hand turn. It says, "We do not have any room for left-hand turn lanes in, on most of Broad." That, you know, it would be a good idea to put a couple of left-hand turn lights along Broad. I think I counted, there, we have three from Giant, well, four if you count the one down at Washington and Broad, but I think we have four along there, because we have one at Gordon, one at, then we have one down by Seve S., and the one, of course, at West Street, too. But, you know, it could help our traffic situation a little bit if we did have the left-hand turn possibility. And then just one other question. Is there any way of, on public record, to get percentages of lot coverage for different homes that are being built right now?
There should be a, another documents that, that have that information if it's gone through a grading plan process.
Right. We used to get, there was one time when the council was concerned about this, we were getting kind of addresses and a report on that kind of thing. I'm only asking, and I know Rob doesn't like this subject, but that's okay, but there are a couple of houses being.
All we got is time.
That are just huge.
You're right.
And I'm just, you know, and again, I think it'd help us to visualize what the percentage of lot coverage is, if it's, is within guidelines, okay? Just, just a thought.
Any other questions?
No.
Yes.
Regarding the comprehensive plan, is there a deadline that has been set to finalize it?
Well, we, we have a comp plan. What we're looking at is updating. I think it was supposed to have been updated 2010 before I got here. So we are, and different communities do it differently, but we are, we are working to update chapter by chapter. I was going to mention housing, which is going through, you know, process right now, and there were forums recently, and it'll be, they'll be finalizing the affordable housing plan. That chapter will be updated, and that may be one that'll be coming back to you, having done the work to update, you know, that whole policy. That chapter should be in pretty good shape, once all of that is reincorporated into the new, the new information incorporated into the, into the chapter. So I think you had a look at that last year, but that's one we would anticipate bringing forward to you because of the work that's been done on the housing policy. Also, I believe historic preservation came to you last year. We are going forward, I believe, with the historic preservation decertification ordinance, which will be coming to you, and Ms. G can fill you in a little bit more on that, but that was given the green light by council.
Any others? Okay, now we will move on to old business, and I see none on our agenda. And our new business will start with the capital improvements program for fiscal year FY14 to FY18. General Fund, School Fund, and Utility Fund, and Ms. Mester is in charge of our presentation.
Good evening, Chair Rogers and Planning Commission. It's my honor to be back again for our annual CIP process. This will be for FY14 through 18. Have quite a lot of information that we'll cover this evening as we present the CIP. This will focus at a high level on projects, but delve into the foundational base and the compound, comp plan base in which to build for the work sessions. Before you this evening, you should have a CIP notebook that has the vision icons on the top, and inside of it, you will find the PowerPoint that I'm gonna be following this evening, table of contents, and some of the documents that I will refer to throughout the presentation. You also will receive a copy of the general government's master plan for facilities. This was the material provided last Thursday at the joint work session with school board and council that Ms. Hockenberry just mentioned. There's a lot of good detail information that'll be relevant to the general government facility discussion that we will have on work session February 11th, so I just wanted to call your attention to that, so I wanted to make sure council, school board, and planning commission all had that material as you delve into the CIP. This evening, as I go through, if you have questions, and it's the pleasure of the planning commission, I'm glad to entertain them as we go through. We will have two work sessions, so if I can't answer a question this evening, we'll be glad to bring that back to you. So if it's all right with you, I'll just start proceeding through. So tonight, we're gonna try to cover a lot of material, and that will include an overview of what's in the CIP under tab one. Key issues, these are the key funding or policy issues coming up, key projects. As I mentioned, the financial status and policies, and I've labeled which tab they are if you wish to follow along in the big notebook, or there'll be a reference for you to go back to afterwards. We'll do a summary of the projects and the fiscal projections and how that impacts the policies, high-level review of projects. Gather any questions and comments you have for the upcoming work session, and we'll have the schedule in the PowerPoint as well. In the CIP notebook that you have, planning commissioners that have done the CIP with me for a couple of years now know I use a three-ring binder format. It is tabbed and organized by the table of contents that you have in the front, so if I say tab one, then you're gonna get the overview. Tab three, we use a lot, because that's the overview summary and the financial implications. But then each function area has a tab, so you can easily find transportation or public safety, for example, if you have questions. Throughout the process, if we make changes, we get a new grant, something changes from the state, or I find an error, which has happened when I produce such a large, complex document, I will give you a revised page, and it will show the new date on it, so you know to swap it out and can easily keep up with the changes. We do a color coding process on the financials, which I'll highlight in a minute, but that helps know the funding sources, whether it's grant, debt service, or pay-as-you-go. And I've also included on the summary in, in section three, tab three, if it was submitted, but it's not being recommended in the proposed CIP I'm presenting tonight, it will show there, "Not recommended," so it'll be easy reference. We know what the need is. You can see the big picture, but it's not in the financials. And for the facilities, the general government and schools are consolidated, because they are all general government facilities. The only exception to that in this CIP is for the Fire Station Six facilities. I've kept that under the public safety, because there's also apparatus, and I wanted you to see the impact of the fire station together, and if I broke out the windows and the doors, you wouldn't see the whole public safety component. Here is the schedule that we'll be dealing with over the next month. Tonight, we'll have the kickoff for your initial public hearing. On the 4th, will be the first work session, and we'll try to target, since there's a lot to cover, a high-level information on new projects and an overview of the projects, but not a real deep dive by staff, so that we could turn it over to you for questions by exceptions or issues and get the dialogue going. For the 4th, we are gonna talk about school facilities, and so I'll provide in this PowerPoint, you'll see a website link to the school's facility master plan, because theirs is all online, not hard copy, so that if you choose to look in more detail than what's just in the CIP, you can look at enrollment and age of facilities. We'll also cover parks and fields, public safety, which will be the police items, as well as the fire station and IT. Then on the 11th, we will pick up with utilities, environment, which is mostly stormwater this year, transportation, general government facilities, and any questions you had from the 4th, we'll answer. And then on the 19th, we'll hold the final public hearing, and staff will request your recommendation on the CIP, so that we can roll it in with the city manager's proposed budget to council on March 11th. And of course, on the 19th, if there's any pending outstanding questions, we'll circle and close those loops. The CIP that's being presented before you this evening is consistent with the documents you see on that screen, so it is consistent with council's vision, the comp plan, and then also the financial policies and the budget guidance from council. The financial policies and budget guidance are in tab two in their entirety behind the financial summary, so that you have an easy reference to those policies, since the slides and some of my charts are in summary, and hopefully that will be helpful, especially since I know this year you have two new commissioner members who will be going through the CIP And it's important to note that I list both the comp plan and the financial policies, because the planning commission by city charter is responsible for ensuring compliance of the comp plan for both, I mean, for the CIP, for both comp plan and financial. In general state code and many other localities, the financial component is not part of the planning commission's role. This is a graphic view of council's vision, and it is staff's goal, is what we present to you this evening, that we are creating projects and infrastructure to create that special place, ensure we have sound finances, environmental harmony. We're preserving our neighborhood, ensuring successful development, and of course, wanting to have outstanding government and world-class schools. There are some parameters that's considered as we develop the CIP, and they're highlighted here, and we'll be going through those in detail as I talk about different policies and projects, but indeed, we try to ensure good financial policy compliance, having reserves, but also balancing that with having projects and addressing the infrastructure needs, so it's not just saving money or just spending money, but a good balance. Building upon our pay-as-you-go, because we started feeding into the pay-as-you-go funds, we're able to utilize some this year, and also trying to take advantage of low interest rate, and although, starting to creep back up, but more affordable construction costs. The next two slides will give you an overview of the projects by functional category, by the year FY14. That's the first year of the CIP, which by budget action by council will actually be appropriated. The other four years are approved planning years, and then I'll give you the five-year total. This first slide is for the utility fund, and you'll see for water, there's no projects planned for FY14, and that's to allow us the transition, if indeed, a water sale happens based on the voter referendum. We couldn't be in the middle of CIP projects with changing ownership. All of the projects are still there, they're just shifted out to the four years, so it's still documenting the need, knowing that we'll maintain our system, it'll just be one-year lag. The sewer continues to function, and you'll see CIP projects, because that utility will not be transferred. The city will still be owning and operating that, and sometimes that gets lost in the community discussions, so I wanted to make sure I clarified that for you. For the general fund, you can see the six functional areas and a 17.5 CIP for FY14. It's a very robust CIP. It's one that is within fund policy, financial policies, as I present it, and I think what we're seeing is a lot of under-investment, pent-up demand, becoming a reality that we need to face in the community. The five-year project total, if you roll everything up, is $150 million CIP. You'll see that I've done some adjustments to that, so that we can actually afford it in the five-year period, and those big chunks there that add up to that will be the schools you'll see in stormwater. If you take off the items that need some other funding sources, this CIP that's before you is 37 million, that have identified funding sources, that is a feasible CIP. This is a pie chart that kind of gives you a visualization, if you like pictures instead of words, or both for comparisons. This is just FY14. The next one will show you both, all five years, but this way you can see the breakout of public works or stormwater, public safety, facilities by those functional areas we just saw on the chart. And this is the five-year picture of the $150 million CIP, if it was all to be funded. This is the different funding sources that would then fund the CIP as presented before you, and this is where I can describe the color coding. And if I can have you turn to tab three for me and page 32, you'll see the color charting there, just to kind of connect you, because sometimes on the screen, the colors are not as true. But grants are gonna be your golden rod, so anything that's an outside funding source is good, because it funds it without local tax funding. Italicize is gonna be your debt financed, and you will see that a large part of this CIP is in white and italicized, and that is a way that we can finance over time these projects, but of course, we do have to take into consideration that those monthly payments, as it were, the debt service payments have to be put into our operating budget. Green is only if a new revenue source is identified to offset the cost, or we get a grant. Now, this would be a grant we don't have. A golden rod is a grant we have in hand, green is something out there. So this is a proxy in this CIP for tax rate increases, economic development, and new net fiscal revenue, as just discussed downstairs, or as a potential of the water sale, there will be an opportunity for some redevelopment, and that might be a avenue to fund some large-scale facility projects. So I use the green this year as a way of not excluding large facility projects, because then we can't see them in their comprehensive picture, but as Ms. Hockenberry mentioned, it's a big apple to bite, it's a big issue, and so we can't do 150 million in five years. You've heard me say that before, we can't afford everything in one five-year increment, but we need to identify, and if we find a funding source, like large-scale economic redevelopment, or a voter referendum, like we did with Mary Ellen Henderson, which went out with, "This is how much you need to build the school, this is a tax rate increase, vote yes or no," and it passed, and you had your funding sources. So I just wanted to give you the background, because that's a bit of a different structure in the way that you'll see the projects as I present them. And then blue is the pay-as-you-go, where we actually use local tax funding to fund. So if I could ask you to turn to, looking for my sheet 33, and I don't see it. Okay, missing a page, so we'll go electronic, and I will get you all that page. What you will have in the page that we'll distribute is a five-year fund balance projection, and a little challenging to see, but I hope you can follow along. This is the way that we are able to take the financial projects and play it out to know if it complies with the policies. And so you will have key ratios for our fund balance ratio and debt service, and I'm gonna come back to that in a minute and talk more about it, but these are within policy, which is important. And that will be page 33, which will be your first insert to your three-ring binder. Oh, it didn't get divided in the, hmm, not in the version I have. Yeah, I think it's missing, but Ms. G does trigger something to highlight. I don't have it in mine, anyway.
Yeah, so that does give me something to highlight for you, which I'd get later, but in the, the first 3-1, you'll see it's noted as recommended version. That is what I'm recommending to you, is projects to be funded, and for which I will ask you to make your recommendation.
ask you to make your recommendation based on any revisions you request. Behind the T.O. sheet is, yeah, my financial projections are missing, so I may have to renumber the pages for you. We were printing them this afternoon per my norm as we finish up all the CIP, because we wanted the second quarter financials that Mr. LaConde is printing downstairs. But behind the teal, you will see the all-in version, which is labeled on the top left and also in the center. This is all projects if we were to fund them, so all of the school projects, all of the stormwater are in here as debt service funded, and so that you would see the impact on the policies. And I will show you electronically those financial projections, and then make sure you have copies. But I wanted to be able to have you be able to compare and contrast what we can afford, but what the full need was if money wasn't an option. Which ties nicely into the slide that's before you, because we do have a lot of opportunities in terms of meeting our infrastructure needs and some positive movement forward in terms of economic upturns as we're seeing in our revenue trends, but it doesn't eliminate the financial challenges. We have too much pent-up demand to afford in one five-year period. Our revenues are not growing as great as our expenditures are if you look at the CIP and the operating budget when you start looking at inter-jurisdictional agreements, VRS pensions, for example. But on the good side, we are having more pay-as-you-go, as I've mentioned, and more grants to be able to move forward on these projects. Now to talk a little bit about the policies, and then I'll bring up the two pages that you're missing, and these slides summarize the policies I mentioned or enter tab one. So for debt service, we have council-adopted policies that are monitored closely by bond rating agencies, which help with our currently good rating levels. And so you can see we are limited on how much debt we can issue based on our taxable real estate. We'll never get to 5% because if we did that, we'd have no operating budget, everything would be on debt, and that's not a feasible way to operate a locality. But an important thing for Planning Commission to note is the annual debt service shall not exceed 12% of our expenditures. That's a threshold that we monitor closely on these CIP projects. Also of importance is how you pay off that debt, so you have to be able to have at least 25% of that debt repaid in five years and 50% in 10 years. So that requires you to stagger it out, which means you can't lump it all into one five-year CIP. Now, this CIP does not reach the maximum of the 12%, but we also have to remember that any debt has to be paid, so the debt service has to be captured in the operating budget and the repayment requirements that I noted above. Now here's a graphic presentation of what's in the CIP. The pink line, the top line, is the policy limit of 12%. And you can see based on what is adopted in the CIP and was proposed before you this evening, we're not reaching the 12%, so that's good, we're in policy limit. But when we see fund balance, we don't have room to add more on the debt service side, at least not all of the projects that were requested for the 150 million. On the fund balance, that's the other big financial policy we pay attention to. The target is 17%. We need to have 17% undesignated fund balance in the bank to handle emergencies. For the city, that translates into about two-month savings. So that would be similar to us being able to handle two months of our expenses if we lost our job and didn't have income. For those of you that were around in the 2009 time period, when we had the significant downturn, the water issues and the sales tax issue, we actually draw that, drew that down to about $2 million, and that's also when we took 4.5 million out of the CIP. We survived that without having a cash flow problem because we had the fund balance. There is in the policy requirements for, if you drop below 12, what you have to plan for, and you have to bring it back up. This CIP is within policy, and I will show you that in the five-year projection chart. Here's how the policy, the ratios summarize. So you can see from 13 amended through 18 projected, we're at 17%, or just under, it's no lower than 16.5. And that is within enough range because we know in the out-years, things will change. It's important to remember, this is of expenditures. So if your expenditures go up with pension costs increased, inter-jurisdictional agreements, employee salaries, or debt service, the requirement for how much goes in that pot of 17% goes up. So there's a very important ratio there. And you can see with the debt service, at our highest level in the proposed CIP, it's 17.8. So you have room, by policy, you could go up to 12%, but you can't afford it because you're already below the 17%. So that's where you do the, the inter-relationship of those policies. That's what the visualization of the chart would look like with the straight pink line being the policy limit. So before, we had gone above policy with surplus, and we used that for a lot of CIP, and now we're below. That's the lowest you can go and not get off policy. Now, before I go to projects, I just want to show you the projection sheet a little bit more fuller with those ratios. So here's the fund balance policy we were talking about, and you can see it goes to the 16.5. What I also want to call out is to note that we are still continuing, which is also in the policy, the capital reserve funding of 500,000 a year, Pago Reserve, so we're actually starting to fund money into Pago so we have resources for the CIP, and also making sure that we're contributing to the fund balance so that we don't fall significantly below that 17% as we do more projects. That's important to note, because if you see down here, Pago Reserve Fund Balance, in the CIP, we are using a lot of Pago. So by the end of the 18, even though we're adding money every year, 600 or 700,000, we're using it, which is good, that's what it's for. But I point that out because some people think, sometimes we'll hear in the community where you're just putting money aside and not using it. There's too much demand, we need to do it, but as I said, the CIP is intended to balance both financial soundness and putting money out to projects. If you look at the all-in version and go to that same financial chart, we're still doing the same funding into those pots, and for the capital reserve by policy, that has to get to 3.7 before we can spend down the capital reserve. So you need two more years of the 500,000, then we'll have that, which will actually help pay debt service on large school facilities, because we will have built up the fund. The Pago we're funding, but we can use now. But if we do the all-in version, you will see we'd actually be negative 180,000 in the reserve for Pago, where you can't use more than you've put in for Pago. And you will see we take the fund balance all, all the way down to 1%. You would basically have nothing available if there was a catastrophic emergency, and by FY17, we are way over policy in terms of debt service. So I did this, so you can see no financial constraints. This is the demand of all the projects, because they're listed in your sheet on 3.1, but this is what would be the impact of the policy. So what you have before you, I've taken that into consideration and brought the recommendation into policy compliance. Now, as you want to move projects and change things and change dollar amounts, we'll adjust that so that you can see implications. Now here's a view of the projects at a high level, and we'll talk more detail the next two meetings. There is IT in terms of Phase Two for FY14, and that is to replace the end-of-life servers for our phone systems for both general government and schools. This is the same CIP that was before you last year, same project. New this year are two public safety ones for radios and PSAP. These are not recommended in this year's CIP, they weren't for out-years anyway. They're new items that the chief of police has brought to our attention, and we're analyzing them, and they needed more study before they were ready to come forward. They also were financially hard to fit into the CIP without, with everything else. I will call your attention, though, that in the FY13 CIP money, we're currently, right now, have funds and are developing the replacement of the dispatch phones, which are very old and falling apart, and that was a priority need, and so that will go a long way towards these next projects. Public safety, as I mentioned earlier, we have fire service facility upgrades, which I kept in the public safety area, windows, which you've seen before, bay doors, which have been brought up as needs, and volunteer fires have gotten full quotes, and they're in here now, and you'll see the price tag went from 250,000 to 530. Mr. Meeks, can I pause for your question?
So, as a grizzled veteran of these CIPs, isn't this the fifth year that we've had these windows? I thought these windows got replaced.
They were never approved, they always kept getting pushed out into an out-year, so they weren't in that first year where it actually got appropriated and we had money to spend. You will see that it is in proposed for FY14, so we actually do it this year. Because you are correct, you have seen it every year, and now with the delay, it's actually, well, we've added the bay doors. It's doubled what you saw before, but the amount of repairs that are going on those bay doors and the amount of electrical and energy going out the windows has made it, we need to do it now. Also, the HVAC system, in particular, the air conditioning side, is designed residential, and it is not sufficient. And on the 4th, we'll have our volunteer president, Ian Whiston, who's here listening tonight, and the chief, Paul Schamberg, with you to go into more detail. We also have two apparatus items that...
Just, just add on, just to that, note to Planning Commission and other people involved, something of this nature shouldn't be happening this many years, I mean, this few years after a new building. So in the future, any, what do they call it, you know, cutting things out just to get things built...
Value engineering.
Come back, value engineering, come back and bite you, and that's a biggie right there. That should not be happening at this point in time.
This is only a 10-year-old building, as we've discussed, and indeed, as Mr. Meeks indicated, you've been discussing it for a while, and most of these things that need to be replaced were residential grade, and they just can't handle a 24-by-7 heavily-used building. Now, as it goes for the apparatus, these are pieces of equipment that obviously get a lot of heavy and hard use, but they're also have their years and miles on them. So you have before you in this year's CIP also the replacement of the ladder truck and the engine. So you will note that all but the 200,000 for the HVAC is in FY14, so there's a $2 million new CIP projects before you for the fire station, very time-sensitive and critical, and so we worked them so that they are within FY14 debt service funded. As it relates to facilities and general government, as we've mentioned, we've just had the joint work session on the 11th, we'll go into more detail, but what you'll see is similar projects that you've seen before, starting to really continue to fund the reinvestment of all 22 facilities of the city. And what you have before you for the first time in the master plan notebook, we have put together a full listing of all of the general government facilities in one place, the age they were built, including the Cherry Hill Farmhouse for 1845 with renovations in 1976. Their square footage and their hours of operation, is it a five-day-a-week or 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week type facility, to put context into some of the facilities and the issues we're dealing with. You will also have the City Hall public safety improvements that came before you last year. It has not changed from last year, it is as the task force recommended it. What's before you this year, though, is simply the funding of the FY14 piece, because the 12s and 13s have been approved. And the library expansion, the library board's project is the same, 6.75 million. They had split it up slightly different in the amount in the first year, instead of 2 million for the first writ of refusal for an acquisition of a possible building land nearby, it's 2.8. I have put that into FY14, the Library Board of Trustees had asked for FY14. My reason for that is the Library Board of Directors and Library Director are currently undertaking a study to reevaluate facility needs and programming needs since the 2008 study that was done by Duberry, because so much has changed between technology and users and type of programming. And that RFP has just closed, and they're just analyzing it, and they're not expecting the study to be done until the end of June. So by the time we review that and see if they recommend a new facility, an expanded facility, or working within the existing corners, there will need to be more time, and it won't be ready for July 1. So I put it out by one year, and the Library Board of Director is aware of that, and she will be briefing the Board of Trustees.
Cindy, could I interrupt you again, please, on the City Hall public safety improvements? I know that this has been granted or, you know, approved and everything, but do you think there needs to be a sit-down, drag-out conversation of, again, about the City Hall? Because I sense that there was a lot of, of difficulty that the council was having with a lot of different parts of it.
I think a lot of it was truly understanding the public safety component of that, the impact of the police and the safety, of course, and the rest of this building. And so as part of your 11th work session, when we bring general government facilities, I'm going to lay it out in a different framework with Mr. Hicks, so you can kind of see how it plays and how the safety, because those of you that have walked in or know the building, it makes sense, but when I just list, these are the benefits, you don't quite get the sense. So I'm going to try that with you all, and then we'll have that as part of the council work session, once I have your all's feedback. I got the sense that the main building, the front, and with some after-conversation, the front parking, were probably there. I think that there's a need to understand for everybody, including the community and you all, how the back plays into it, because it's not just adding an office building, it's providing space for the police department. So I think that work session was helpful to know where the questions still remain.
I think, though, that the fact is, is that Planning Commission might have more information about it than the city council does, and I don't think they've got enough information to be on board with some things.
Well, that work session last time was our first time to actually have the sit-down of all the facilities on school and general government side, so it was a great first three hours, but it certainly, you can't absorb it all in three hours, knowing how much time you all have spent with it and what the task force has spent with it. Thank you. In this slideshow, I've provided some visuals of our photos of our facilities, because a lot of people just think City Hall, or maybe they think City Hall, Library, and Community Center. So here's a collection of the ones often most known to the community, including the fire station we've been talking about. And then on the next slide, you get some of the lesser-known but equally important to our ability to do our services, including the property yard, the barn, the homeless shelter, and some of our sheds for our public works operations. The schools have a significant facility demand and need, as we've talked last year, and has been updated and reviewed last year. In tab six, you will have the school's full CIP presentation. It is on page 6-9, and it starts with some pretty bold colors. It's in a different format so that the superintendent could include her enrollment, school capacities, and their projects. So on the 4th, your first work session, we'll go through that in detail. But they are, as we know, doing Phase Two, the TJ Elementary School Project. The CIP does include ongoing money for the modernization of older elevators, HVAC systems. It does have money for the Cherry Street Preschool. Last year it was in 14, so it was in the planning year, not 13 for appropriated, this would appropriate it. It is now at 2.4 instead of 2 million that was in the CIP last year. Mr. Meeks?
I know we have a work session coming up on this, and I will read... Jim, I know we have a work session coming up on this, and I will read the CIP, but, you know, I never got last year how this was saving money, if I'm phrasing that correctly. So you have facilities, I understand if you have more students, you've got to have someplace to put them. But I, when I read through this and they sort of did it again, there was a justification for this, that it was cost-effective, and since it seems to get expensive by a big factor every time we look at it. Didn't it start at like 1.4 and now it's 2.4? It's neither here nor there. But I didn't get that. So could you just make a note that we could...
I've made a note, and I'll ask the superintendent to expand upon that, which she can, in terms of how they've done their cost analysis on Mount Daniel, in terms of expanding on-site versus a whole-new school. The Mount Daniel project is 6 million. This is now 1 million in FY14 and the remaining 5 million in FY15. This is moved up a fiscal year. When you saw it last year, it was 15, 16. These two projects and the modernization are recommended in this proposed CIP that's before you. The proposed CIP does propose expanding on-site at the existing Mount Daniel project. The adopted CIP did call for a discussion on whether or not a alternative site for a brand-new school should be considered before the 6 million was put into Mount Daniel. And we can discuss the details of the projects on the fourth. Council was pretty clear at the joint work session last week, when they continued their dialogue on just general government facilities and gave the school board members the option to stay or not, that the raising of City Hall isn't an option they find financially feasible or realistically, time-wise, workable, because Mount Daniel's already at capacity. Left it open that if the school board and the community wanted to explore another school site, maybe on land that we might annex if a water sale goes through and have a big campus or some other site, they'd be open to it, but not to the detriment of City Hall and the police station and the public safety issues. A new elementary school, the superintendent's giving me their cost estimates, because they did do a cost estimate, and I don't have that yet. When I looked at Fairfax County CIPs for last week's discussion, it was in the 25-to-30 million range. So there'll have to be a cost-benefit analysis if we already have pressures of 150 million CIP as to whether we could afford the elementary school and if that was a priority for the school board. The school board formally adopted 6 million, expanding at existing site for Mount Daniel. So I want to be clear about that and just had a note in the adopted CIP, which you will see, as to whether an alternative should be considered. Not recommended in the CIP for funding, but noted in green, so that if we came up with a revenue offset, we would look at the high school, a new high school, that's a tear-down, rebuild for 99.5 million, and expansion at Mary Ellen Henderson by 10 classes, basically a new wing. Those I'm not recommending for a couple reasons, and they're jointly together since they're on the same campus. One is our financial policies cannot afford 104 million facility project. I think we have some opportunities, if the water sale goes through based on the voter referendum next November, that could provide cash or ongoing revenue to handle debt service. But where redevelopment would happen up there, as it related to school, there's a whole lot of things to be sorted out. And the, just as in the library, it wouldn't be sorted out for FY14. I don't believe it'll be sorted out for the high school in FY14. The full school board, as I noted, is in here, so you can see their full request. This highlights what we've been talking about in terms of the joint session. What I do want to point out is at the bottom, the website links, so you can get the master planning information in full, electronic for the cities, electronic for the schools. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Going back to the George Mason projection, 99 million, I'm not sure if, is that realistic as the cost of a tear-down building of a new high school? It seemed to me as if that's thin.
The schools did a study and used Arcadis and some of their consultants and contractors that they have onboard for TJ, and that was the estimate based on classroom and configuration. And you'll see, they've actually done a fair amount of programming that you'll see broken out in here, how many science rooms, math rooms, and so forth they need. And so I'll make a note so the superintendent can give you more background on the high school costs.
Okay, thank you.
For environment, you'll see there's funding in here for stormwater, about 11 million. It would bring it consistent with the adopted watershed management plan, the new Chesapeake Bay requirements that are coming, the studies that we've done to know our aging and undersized facilities. We'll have a good discussion on this on the 11th. This is listed in the CIP only if there's another revenue source identified. That would have to either be a tax rate increase or an enterprise fund, and council's currently looking at what level of service for stormwater, as well as payment options, whether it's an enterprise fund and then you'd have your own utility fee, which is more of a user fee, or if it's part of the tax base. That's going to be happening concurrently while you develop the CIP. And council has another work session on this for February 4th. So as we go through the process, there could be some updates for the Planning Commission. Transportation, there are a lot of projects that were currently underway, for example, with the intermodal transit plaza discussion we just had with the community public hearing. And I'd like to take this opportunity to call out something new to you in the CIP this year, under tab one, on page 1-8. And what I have included in here is an update of existing projects, because as you know, once the project's approved, it doesn't show up in your CIP, but it's probably still ongoing or we're approving a new one and we're actually getting to design phase. So since we always get questions, we've gone ahead and given you an update on the projects. And in particular, because there's a lot with transportation, Wendy will be joining us on the 11th and do a little bit more in-depth on the transportation project updates. But starting on page 1-8, you'll see a list of the project, scope, cost, schedule, and the status. So for example, Freddie Park gazebo completed, the new one's back up from the tree, taking it out. But then you could get an update on Lincoln Park, where the equipment's been ordered, and we hope to have it installed shortly, all the way through co-branch daylighting, which you've seen before. And I think we even have the Penn Broad traffic signal in there. So hopefully that'll be a good resource for you as we go through this. You can see the future projects you're talking about, but if you have a question about an existing one, you can go back here. There are quite a few projects in the CIP as it relates to streets, ped bike, roadbed, utility relocation's a new one this year, because we know the undergrounding and moving of poles is always important, and a lot of times it's in a block that's not being developed, and we want to complete something. Like right now, we're getting the Hilton Garden Inn, Flower Building's done, then there's a break, then you have the Hilton Garden Inn, then you have a break, and then you have Broadway. So it would give the city the option of finishing out some of these areas, so we don't have the up and down. The bridge repla...
Cindy, with relation to that, we did, we have had some initial contact with the properties between the Hilton Garden Inn and the Flower Building, and those property owners, I think, are willing to give the city an easement in return for the streetscape going in. So, again, filling in the gaps, there are various ways to do it, but trying to get cooperation of the various property owners is an important piece of that.
So to that end, you'll see in FY14 and 15, there's a higher amount of money for utility relocation, and then it becomes 100,000 each year to hopefully leverage other developers. And that spike is because we hope to be able to accomplish that specific project. We'll note another new project is bridge replacement. Public Works has just completed an audit of all 26 bridges that we have in the city, which is the first time that's been done in a while, so we really now have a good basis, just like we're just completing the roadbed assessment. And we have three very critical, high-priority bridges that need repair, and Oak Street is one you all might be familiar with because of the press release and signage. We have to restrict the weight on that bridge because it can't support it. One on Van Buren, the bridge itself is fine, but the pedestrian part is not, so we've actually had to block off that piece. So this CIP provides some money. This one is one that there is grant funding for, once we write the grants and have this assessment, that potentially could cover the bulk, if not all. So you'll see most of the bridge work is grant money. The WNOD Trail is a new one, and it is tied to what you all were discussing in terms of the CACT presentation. This is in the CIP for 150,000, but only if new revenue offset, and for FY15, as we develop stuff. A lot of the stuff that you all noted in the presentation doesn't cost money, or would be low, and it would be in the operating budget, not the CIP. But this could be some of the potential big things for a lot of signs or a big pavilion or water fountain-type stuff. So we put it in as an option, so we can continue the community dialogue based on that good presentation. I do want to highlight for the Planning Commission and the public, there is no commercial transportation tax overlay in this year's CIP. That's for a couple reasons. One, staff have been really busy on existing projects, so we haven't done good community dialogue with the businesses in Chamber that we had committed to do before we talked about a special overlay tax district. That's one reason. The other reason is we're having a strong community discussion on stormwater, and so that is a fee or some other tax implication, and we felt that benefits the businesses. We had other transportation money that we could do in the meantime. We wouldn't add another complexity. And the third reason is the governor has just unveiled a brand-new transportation plan, possibly changing how things are funding, and who knows if this one source that remained from the previous legislation will survive or not. I didn't want to start a community dialogue on something that we then lose enabling legislation for. For recreation and park, there's 1.8 million. There is the funding for West End Park. Oh my, something got messed up there. West End, let me go to my slide 3.2. West End Park is 130 in FY14. So that is first, because it's going to be the next project. And then what's gotten deleted, that should be the 15 and 18, is park master plan money. And this is put in for pay-as-you-go money. Pay-as-you-go for CIP, you can spend on anything that's at least five years or older, but if you're going to do debt-funded projects, they have to have a life cycle of 10 years. A lot of the CIP needs for the parks' master plans, whether we're talking signage or a new trail or something, isn't going to have the 10-year life cycle. So this gives Rexon Park more flexibility. The FY16 project then would be designing the Howard E. Herman and then doing the construction in 17. And then in 16, there is the George Mason turf, synthetic turf replacement, that had a life cycle of 10 years, and believe it or not, it'll be 10 years in 16. And that is proposed at 200,000 from the school side of the CIP and 200,000 from the general government Rexon Park CIP, because it's a 50-50 share. But in reality, we know the CIP is all on the general government side. So you'll see in the summary sheet that it's just general government. This slide, I'll give you a new slide since it is missing the park master plan, and before I post it to the website tomorrow, I'll correct it. So for the Rexon Parks, there's funding in every year to do projects in the park, which is very different than what we found in the past. Currently, they have 400,000. 200,000 is going for the Lincoln Park equipment replacement from where the, it was damaged from the car accident. And so that'll still leave them 200,000, then they'll have West End in 14, and then continuing a project every year. The school board also asked to have the high school track resurfaced. It is below the 150,000 threshold, so it's not in the CIP.
Cindy, was the threshold always 150? I thought it was 100.
Thank you, I should have highlighted that, and I actually put it bold in my text. This year it is 150 instead of 100,000, because we were getting too many requests that really are operating budget and not capital, and we knew we had millions-of-dollar capital projects. Also, because we were having to do much more debt financing, we clarified and make sure we were clear that it had to at least have a five-year life cycle to be in the CIP, but if it was going to be debt-financed, it had to have at least 10. Thank you, Chair Rogers, for reminding me to highlight that. So that's on page 1-1, under the first tab. I put it in bold, but then didn't mention it. Truth test, my documents being read. Thank you.
Something on open space in parks that, in our negotiations, Jim, in our negotiations with our two new developments coming up down in that area, if we could do any negotiated proffers for the park down in that area.
Well, in the case of the Reserve at Tanner Hill proposal...
Reserve and the Harris Teeter.
Yeah. The, there was a big effort to, as this project particularly, to speak to the Reserve first, to pick up that additional property.
Right.
And so that will, you know, that's a major expense to purchase and then to develop. So that's a multimillion-dollar effort. And Harris Teeter, the size of the site and the location, I think it's very difficult to get open space per se, although there may be some buffer open space adjacent to the community.
Yeah, that's not exactly what I meant by that.
You're looking at contributions, or...
To get the Big Chimneys Park, to get some, because if they're going to be building at the Harris Teeter site, you've got all the big equipment there, and we've always thought that improvements in that park could have been done along with development in the city center. And, you know, any money being able to put into there. So that might be a possibility from the Harris Teeter.
One thing in looking at the South Washington Street Plan, we're looking at what should be the appropriate plan for the Virginia Village area, which presently is shown on the master plan for mixed use, that would imply redevelopment. And our thinking is that that should be changed, should be left as maybe a combination of residential and open space, and with the notion that it could be retained as affordable existing housing, but with the potential eventually creating open spaces, properties became available, if the city were able to consolidate over time. And that would give you an expansion eventually. This is looking long-term, connected to Big Chimneys Park, which would give you a south-side open space area where you could have a combination of uses. So I think Big Chimneys Park needs to be thought of in terms of what could be done, how can we better connect it to other parts of the community, and can it be expanded over time?
Well, in the old city center plan, the best thing I thought about the old city center plan, which isn't probably going to ever get built, it looks like, was the improvements to Big Chimneys with respect to, in some cases, fairly simple improvements, which were not wildly cost-effective. So without trying to turn this into our own little vision of maple where we're micromanaging the Harris Teeter project, it would seem to me that it's fairly inexpensive, some of these things. With, and a specific example would be that the slope of the site sort of collects all the stormwater at the bottom.
Stormwater management.
But there's just no place for it to go. So it's not a wildly complicated engineering plan, just to sort of do a little bit. I mean...
Well, it could be that, you know, contributions toward the future improvements in that area. I think that park really needs to be reimagined, and also if the bowling alley site ever is redeveloped at some point or replanned, the interplay between that and the Big Chimneys Park is very important. We have, I've not heard a lot of detail from parks in terms of what their vision for that park is, other than what it is presently.
There is a master plan.
I know there was a roadway that was going to be along that one edge, which may or may not...
There is a master plan for it that was, essentially was incorporated by the old city center. I mean, loosely was incorporated.
One thing I will say, since we have lined up the city center opportunity area replanning following South Washington Street, the thought being that doing all of the Washington Street corridor would make sense, and there will be an opportunity then to look hard at what should happen. should happen to Big Chimneys Park. Perhaps there is some positive thing that could happen with regard to Harris Teeter toward that park. I'd like to talk more with Director of Parks and Recreation in terms of what their present thinking is. But I think it's an excellent point that there's an opportunity, and there is a need. The exact nature of that need, I'm not sure of, but it's something we certainly will be looking at more closely in the upcoming look at the city center, replanning of the city center opportunity area, which is the next one on our list. So I appreciate the thought of the commission, that that would be an area of focus.
Again, though, it would be, I don't think we should ever throw out the good to look at the perfect. If that park could be made more usable by some drainage infrastructure, and we've got a huge development going right in there, adjacent to it, it would make perfect sense to me to have a proffer negotiated for work to be done on Big Chimneys.
I think this is also, you know, one of the things we're hoping, I'm sorry, excuse me. One of the things we're hoping to do is to get these projects launched, so that they can go through the review process of the commission, and Architectural Advisory Board, et cetera. And the types of things you're talking about now are the perfect kind of dialogue for us to be having with the developers and their planners and architects. So certainly, those are the things we'll remember to be talking about as it comes through the commission and to the AAB. And I appreciate it being mentioned this evening. It's very helpful.
Just one more function area, and then it's just a summary and closeout. Of course, we do have water and sewer. We'll have those discussions on the eleventh. This will be continuing to implement their master plan. I've mentioned no water projects in fourteen, and you could see the type of projects that will be covered. These are separate enterprise funds, so they're funded by the rates. So the Planning Commission's conversations tend to focus more on the general fund, because that's a directly tax revenue base, and the more complex one to afford and fund. This is just a summary of the starting slides, so that you could see it again with the total projects, seventeen point five in FY14, a hundred and fifty million in the five-year. And again, that includes the high school, Mary Ellen Henderson, and the stormwater. It is thirty-seven million if we're looking at pay-as-you-go grants and debt-financed projects recommended before you this evening. That's the fund summary again, and I've noted in the bottom-left corner, those two projects that you would subtract out to get to that net thirty-seven million. Here is how you and the public can get more information. All stuff will be posted on the budget website page. We've made a special CIP page to make it easier for the public to get to the deliberations, the additional memos that I give you, PowerPoints, will all be posted there, as well as that's where you'll find this general government master plan notebook that you have a hard copy of this evening, the public can access electronically, and of course, how you find me. So with that, I'd be glad to take any additional questions or items that you wish for follow-up, and I've made a note of the two for the school superintendent, and some corrections that I need to do for a page in a PowerPoint slide.
I was going to say I have to leave. I can't talk anymore. Are there any further questions of Ms. Mester on the CIP project program?
I've got one that's not directly to the CIP, but I would love to see information that we've never, I know we have to go through a referendum, but what exactly, which parcels of land are involved in the water sale, and, you know, the location, acreage, all that. You know, we've never seen any information on that, and we're going to be running into one of these what-ifs-then situations. And just for thinking purposes, it might be good to have that kind of info.
Do you mean with regard to the schools, or just generally?
Both.
We, I could certainly make available...
Land. I'm thinking about land.
We have done maps that show that, so we can get those to you.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the land, you know, involved.
We can make available the public information that we've done with maps for what the options are. It is premature to start redeveloping that area till we get to the voter referendum, and there will be some more material tied to that, so I want to be cautious we don't get too far ahead on assuming everything. But we do have the information that was part of council's review when they took action to adopt the terms for the negotiated water sale.
Yeah, I don't need...
You're specifically looking for just the geography of the parcels themselves.
Right.
We'll get you those maps.
I mean, nothing complex here, but...
Yeah, we did some maps showing outlines of which pieces would be included in the boundary adjustment.
We could have that for...
Yeah, we've got that.
If the schools are coming to that work session.
Be happy to provide that for you.
When you said that the council has determined that they aren't going to put this building in play, is that referring to Mike Carney's plan? Or is that, can you, what did you mean? So are they, they wouldn't lease space for the police department, or whatever?
Yeah, their point was around a proposal to put a new school here and tear down City Hall. And the verbal consensus at the work session, which we'll follow up with a resolution on, was to not raise City Hall, but to maintain this as the heart of the city for community events and the police station.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Mester.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to a more detailed work session.
Thank you. I know it was a lot of material this evening, and look forward to the two work sessions. And please feel free to let me know if you think of questions in between time.
Okay. Mr. Odyska?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing until February 4th, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will continue the public hearing until the 4th of February. I see no other business on our agenda. Do any other commissioners have other business that they... Let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? See, you're ready.
No, I was, thank you for voting for me. I was going to abstain on the minutes.
You're welcome.
Oh. We didn't think you'd notice. Any changes or amendments to the minutes?
No.
No. Do I have a motion to approve? I would like to hear a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm abstaining, because I wasn't here.
The minutes are approved as presented. Thank you for the good minutes, Ms. G. Check my, I guess we can move on to adjournment.
That's your job. Permanent.
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is adjourned.
Nine-thirty.
That's your permanent job.